All right. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Natalie Jack Torowitz, if you don't know me already, and I'm president of the District 34 Board of Education. Our meeting was convened tonight at 6:30, and we went into executive session, which has just now concluded, and we will begin our public portion of tonight's meeting. Just as we did last meeting, we will once again be giving audience members the ability to address the board directly as live participants, and when we get to that point in our agenda, I'll just recap how that works. As always, tonight, I'm joined by my fellow board members Jim Baumstark, John Haggy, Katie Jones, Mike Corman, Diane Stefani, and Scott Nelson. Also joining us tonight is our administrative team, including Dr. Dane Delly, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, Dr. Matt Silverman, Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Eric Miller, Assistant, no, Executive Director of Human Resources, Dr. Heather Hopkins, Executive Director of Student Services, Mary Garrity, Executive Director for Institutional Innovation, Brian Engel, Director of Communications and Strategic Planning, Kathy Kajigian, Director of EL Bilingual Programs, Raquel Kim, Assistant Director of Student Services, Kristin Casillas, and our Board Recording Secretary, Katie Siegel. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to take just a moment to acknowledge that tonight will be the last regular board meeting for one of our board members, Katie Jones. Katie has served on our board for the last four years and has been deeply engaged in the work of District 34. She was involved in the development of our new strategic plan, our referendum efforts, and addressing our district needs during a pandemic school year, along with the long list of other issues, both large and small, that have come up in the last four years. Katie, you have left an indelible mark on our district. We thank you for your service, your perspective, and your hard work. I'm going to ask if any other board members have anything they'd like to say, right? John?
I would just want to thank Katie for everything she's done for the kids in this district. She's a tireless advocate for the children. She's a collaborative worker on the board. It's been an absolute pleasure thus far, and I know that I look forward to doing other things in the community with Katie as well.
Well said, John. Scott?
Katie, I got to meet you volunteering with the GEF. You helped me decide to do this work on the board. Thank you so much. The children of Glenview will be feeling your warmth and work for years to come. The work you did on the referendum is amazing. Your family and yourself have supported the people of Glenview so much. We will miss you at board meetings, but see you in the community and really hope you stay engaged with us because your ideas are felt and honored. Thank you.
Diane, I don't want to skip any better. I'll come to you, Mike, but I think Diane also had her end up.
Katie, I've considered you a friend as well as a valued peer on the board, and I've always valued your thoughts on issues before the board. You've made such a strong positive impact for our community, and your contributions are always appreciated. I'm genuinely grateful to the time and energy you've given to the community and to the schools, and we hope that you will continue to be involved as you have been. Thank you so much.
Mike?
Well, listen, Katie, as my seatmate on the board for two years, you know, sitting next to each other for a good, more than a year of that, I learned so much from you, and I think as I look forward to kindergarten, full day K in our buildings in, at Lyon and Henking and Westbrook, I'm going to think of you an awful lot because you brought to that conversation a passion that I would not have had on my own, and you were able to help me express the importance of that into the community. And having full day K will have your fingerprints on it for the next 20 to 25 years, and you should be very proud of that, and I hope your girls are very proud of that because it will be hugely impactful for our community for generations.
Absolutely. Jim?
And Katie, I just remember meeting you for the first time, or if you remember at Village Hall, we, you and me and Diane gathered there for a photo op, and that was the first time I got a chance to meet you. Knew I was going to be running with you, and I was super impressed then, and honestly, my level of impressness has only grown since then over the last four years in that regard. So anyway, just offer my sincere thanks for your four years helping me personally grow as a board member and helping our board overall to grow, and so thank you. I'm going to miss you.
All right. Katie, is there anything you wanted to say?
I just, I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community of District 34. It's been wonderful working with all of the administration and the teachers when I've had the chance. But I've said this publicly, we have one of the most highly functioning boards that I've really ever seen or been a part of, and it's been wonderful working with all of you, and I know you will continue this as we move forward, and I know that our students and our community, they are in great hands with all of you, and I'm proud of all the work that we've done over the past four years, so thank you.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Thanks, everybody. I hope that gives you, Katie, a sense of how we feel about you, so. Anyway, we must proceed with tonight's meeting, and so we will start with our approvals. We have two items for consideration tonight, and the first approval is for tonight's agenda. Board may have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda.
So move to Jim Baumstark.
Second, John Haggy.
This is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next, we need a motion and a second to approve the March 29, 2020, 2021, 2021 regular and executive board meeting minutes.
So move, Johnny.
Second, Diane Stefani.
I think Diane Beach has got. May all those in favor please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, so that brings us to the communications portion of our agenda, and although the board has already communicated a bit, we're now going to hand it over to Dr. Delly.
Thank you, Natalie, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. As you know, last week, District 34 saw the return of more students to school on a full-time basis through the implementation of our adapted in-person model, and I'm pleased to report that our transition really went as planned. And in a moment, we'd like to share with you some of the wonderful experiences that unfolded last week. It was really very powerful on many levels, and we're excited to share some of that with you. But first, I do feel compelled to issue another request to all to please be mindful of our self-screening protocols and continue to practice the three Ws. Our Northfield Township dashboard has seen an uptick in reported positive cases, and we do continue to see more instances of close-contact quarantine among students since the start of adapted pause. I'm also, though, pleased to report that we have not had any transmission in the schools that have been traced back to any of our school buildings, so we're very pleased with that. I do just want to remind people to please stay vigilant so that we can enjoy as much of the remaining school year as we possibly can and to do so safely. With that, I would like to introduce and welcome in to our group Dr. Sarah Gett Part, who is the Special Services Instructional Coach for District 34, and she has just some wonderful insights and highlights from the SEL-related activities that we saw in the district from last week. So we welcome Dr. Gett Part. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Delly. Welcome, everyone, to the board meeting, and thank you so much for having me. I know Kathy, did you want to share the presentation? Or I can, either way. Thank you. So to start the week off, we decided to have something called the District 34 D34 Celebration, and there was a lot of debate over whether or not we called it the SEL celebration or the celebration, and we settled on celebration, so I'm going to use that moving forward. Next slide. So what is SEL? SEL is the process through which all young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. Slide. Whoops. There we go. Thanks, Kathy. District 34 has increased our focus on SEL for many reasons this year, but the most important reason is the value that it brings to our students and our classroom communities. Next slide. Our entire D34 community participated in the celebration activities as we welcomed our students to adapted in-person last week. So what does a D34 celebration look like? Next slide. We were so excited to kick off the week with inspirational and impactful programming from local SEL leader Dr. Doug Bolton. As you can see, teachers found great value in his wise words. Next. Parents also had the opportunity to hear from Dr. Bolton and had a similarly positive response to his evening programming. And then it was time to welcome all of our students back to school, wearing our celebration shirts to show community. Each building found unique ways to add fun and excitement, learn new routines, and reopen familiar and beloved spaces like the LRCs. Next slide. Our amazing e-learning psychologists and social work teams developed lots of new ideas for teachers to choose from as they embedded SEL throughout student stays, choices focused on topics such as building community, sharing emotions in healthy ways, and finding ways to include mindful movement throughout the day. Sorry. Oh, that's okay. And then finally, as a continuation of our One Book, One Community project from back in the fall, all students reread the amazing book You Hold Me Up. They then participated in meaningful class conversations about the ways we found to hold each other up during this extraordinary school year and created a visual celebration of those conversations with decorated lawn flags for the whole community to enjoy. However, our outstanding teachers and students can share our celebration better than I ever will, so please enjoy this video put together by our District Communications Department.
And give me one minute because I don't think I connected audio, and I want to make sure you can hear. Yes. So I will share again. Yeah. Kathy? There we go. Is Dr. Gett Part, do you have any more to add?
No, that was it. Thank you so much for your attention.
I just want to say I don't know what I loved better. Principal Hoff getting a pie in the face or the dance that I saw near the beginning. I love both of those, but I, yesterday I happened to be walking by Pleasant Ridge, and I saw the white flags, and I stopped to read a couple of the messages, and it literally brought me to tears. There's just some, just heartwarming, beautiful messages on those flags, and I commend all the educators and students who did all those activities and everyone who wrote a message on that flag. It just brings us all together, so, so heartwarming. Thank you for sharing that video with us. Dr. Delly, did you have additional comments?
Well, just to reinforce that, you know, there wasn't a person who was not involved in those activities last week. I mean, whether you were a teacher, a support staff member, a member of the custodial staff, I mean, the list goes on. I mean, you talk about feeling a lift, literally, very present and consistent of everyone, and so I'm just very proud of the way everyone participated and pulled together to really make this a meaningful return to more in-person learning. So thank you to everyone who touched this really in any way.
Here, here. Thank you from us as well.
So that concludes my comments for this evening also.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining us, Dr. Gett Part. Now we are actually at the first of two opportunities for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so using a link found on our district website. As usual, our Director of Communications, Kathy Kajigian, will read your name and your connection to the district and then bring you on screen as a panelist. Please make sure that your full name appears so that she may find you among all attendees. As has always been the case, you will have three minutes to speak, and you will get a 30-second warning as you get near that three-minute mark. Please know that the board will be listening and taking notes, but we will not be responding tonight. This is your time to talk. The board and the administration, or the administration, will follow up with answers to any questions either via email or by posting them on our website, whichever is appropriate. We ask that you register for only one, one time per each opportunity given, and we also ask that speakers conduct themselves with respect and civility as outlined in our board policy. Kathy, do we have anyone wishing to address the board?
Yes, we have two people wishing to address the board. I will bring on Mary Co. All right, Mary is here.
You can go ahead, Mary.
Sorry about that. Okay, sorry, I have my daughter with me. She was melting down. Okay. I'm just, so basically, the D34 community received a letter last week about, you know, COVID prevention reminders and to prevent us from returning to remote learning. And so I just had a couple of questions in relation to that and a couple of comments. So since January, I think Henking's had two total cases based on the dashboard, and I think Westbrook and Goal has had four, which kind of shows that like remote learning and in-person learning can have the same outcome. And also, remote learning is likely inherently low or under-reported because they don't report to anybody. But I was just a little bit concerned because I feel like the dialogue potentially is already being brought up as numbers gradually rise about remote learning, and I was just kind of confused because back in November, we had 8,000 to 10,000 cases a day in Illinois, and we were in session at that point. And D34 was also planning an opening in mid-January at that point to return to hybrid. And in January, when we went back, we had the over 3,000 cases, and then currently, right now, we have over 3,000 cases. So we're at the exact same level of January when we were in-person hybrid. And just because the conversation of remote learning was brought up or it was discussed in the email, I just was a little bit concerned because the numbers are the same. It seems like the goalposts moved. Also, Pritzker says that school openings and shutdowns should be based on community transmission. They mentioned Northfield Township tonight, and the number's going up. The Glenview data is, I would assume, to be our primary focus because we're awfully far from UFC where they had a frat party with 50 cases. On Sunday, Glenview had 6.9 people as their rolling average of positive daily cases, and then that's a 3.24 positivity rate. So I guess I'm just hoping that the numbers basically are just focused on our community. Like, we look at the community, not the whole state of Illinois, when we decide to make open and closure decisions, which is kind of what Pritzker recommended. So I guess I have three specific questions to get to my point. Do you look at the Glenview-specific data in making the decision to open and close, or do you look at Illinois or Cook County as a whole? And also, if there is like an outbreak at Henking or if there's an outbreak at Hoffman, does all of D34 have to close down, or is it just that school treated as an individual? And then, oh, I'm sorry, one more quick question. And then my last question is, did the goalposts move? We were in-person session in November, and now we're discussing remote, and we're down to 3,000 people, which is when we were way less than when we were in school in November. So I just want to know if the goalposts moved, and if so, maybe where, if you could give us an idea of where it is. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. Right on time. I think, yeah, I was just going to say, I think that's three minutes. Kathy, who do we have next? Thank you, Mary.
Let's see, we have Michael Tarkaus, I want to say this right, Michael Tarkowski. We have a Michael. I'm going to hope it's the right one. Michael, hopefully the community member who signed up to speak.
Yes, it is, and I actually was late getting onto the Zoom, so I was unable to get my class name in. I appreciate that. And my first question is, I actually reiterate Mary's comments, and I'm curious. I would like, or if you could respond to her, I would kind of like to get that kind of response as well if you're just going to be providing those responses to the COVID issue to the parents tonight. Otherwise, if you could be
Well, Mike.
giving a blanket statement to everyone, that's fine, too.
Right. I'm sorry to interrupt, but we, as I pointed out earlier, we don't respond.
Okay, no, that's fine. I got a response from an email response. But if you're emailing Mary regarding COVID, I had similar questions, so I'm not sure whether this could be a blanket statement to everybody. I just had a quick question regarding the, I am a Henking parent. I have a first grader, and I'm kind of curious regarding academic aspects and regarding foreign language opportunities for children because it seems that America is the only industrialized country that doesn't seem to have a handle on introducing children, young children, to a foreign language. I know we have many Hispanic and Spanish-speaking children, which they receive Spanish instruction, as well as then they're brought into the English classes as well. I'm curious why Anglophone children are not introduced to a foreign language when they are most apt to understand and get the ideas of every foreign language before it becomes simply elective in high school. That's really my only question, and I would like to kind of, I had a IEP meeting with my teachers, and I'm kind of curious why District 34 doesn't have sensory rooms in regard to, I asked a question regarding what type of regulation my son is able to have, and basically their answer was that everyone gets a soft start before class. And I know that children with sensory issues, such as my son, would benefit from having some kind of opportunity, a room, or something that they were able to do some sensory play before being brought into a static classroom. Thank you, and that's my only question. Thank you.
Was I talking and I was muted? I'm sorry. Thank you, Michael, for your questions and comments. We appreciate. So Kathy, just to make sure there's nobody else waiting?
Correct. Those were the only two comments.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Then we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is consideration of resolutions, otherwise known as our consent agenda. These are items that are either routine in nature or have been previously discussed by the board. Tonight, we have five items on consent. We have Resolution 2162, the Personnel Report, Resolution 2163, Approval of Payroll Warrants, Resolution 2164, Approval of Vendor Warrants, Resolution 2165, Transportation Contract Amendment for Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Safeway, and Resolution 2166, Transportation Contract Amendment for Fiscal Year 2022 All-Town. May I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So move, Johnny.
Second, Katie Jones.
All right, this is a roll call vote, so Katie Siegel, may I have a roll, please? Haggy?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Jack Torowitz?
Aye.
Stefani?
Aye.
Baumstark?
Aye.
Corman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Katie, for the roll. Well, since tonight we don't have any other resolutions for consideration, we will move directly into the discussion portion of tonight's agenda, and we begin with the presentation from Dr. Silverman about middle school schedule enhancements. So take it away, Dr. Silverman.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm so excited to introduce the middle school team coming on board because we're going to be talking about opportunities for our children at the middle level, more choices, more depth of learning, more broad range of middle school learning, and really, this trajectory that will take them into the high school experience with some new opportunities. So I'm going to stop and let Mr. Case, I think you're going to kick us off here and get us rolling into the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you. Can you hear me? We're good? Okay. I see head nodding, so I'll take it as a, and Kathy, I can share my screen when I need, yeah. Excellent. Well, thanks so much. There's four of us here to help present tonight. Mark Richter, Karen Schwartzwald, and Allison Dower. I'm principals and assistant principals from the middle schools, and so appreciate the time. It was about a year ago that we were first presenting about the schedule that is implemented this year. It feels like a decade ago, but it was just a year ago, and I'm going to share my screen, and hopefully all works. And so just to give you some context, we this year implemented a new schedule in which we addressed some needs around minutes within the day as well as looking at how we teach our core subjects, our B blocks, which are math and science, social studies, language arts, with the idea that this would be a multi-year rollout with the next thing that we needed to address would be our A blocks, which are mostly PE, global language, our fine arts classes. There's other things involved in there, too, interventions, resource classes, and things like that. And so we looked at addressing that for next year. So here today, we're talking about what we're going to be implementing next year and years beyond during that A block time and how we could make that beneficial for all our students. And so, there we go. So we pulled together a committee, an amazing committee. They did a great job. This was a tough one, I think. They're wearing a lot of hats when they sat around the table, really around the Zoom, having discussions, and so they all came with knowledge of their individual departments. We had some general education teachers on there as well to support us, but they also did a great job of kind of removing those hats and also putting on just a general middle school teacher hat to try to look at what would work within the whole schedule. We had a pretty short timeline, but intense timeline, in which we met. We reviewed what the We reviewed what the previous groups had talked about and we're looking for what we thought were our strengths and our needs. We looked at what other schools are doing as well as we then decided, you know, moving forward, what we would implement. Again, keeping students, you know, in our minds and what we can do best to support them. This slide has a lot of information on it and I'm going to take some time to go through it. There. And so trying to just give you all of the information and not get too much into the nuts and bolts of how the schedule actually works. But these are the, the major changes that you're going to see for next year. And so you can see in our current schedule, just starting right there at the top, on the left side, their current schedule currently has band and orchestra, our large group rehearsals meeting before school. And so that was a big conversation that we had among the whole group, as well as specifically with band choir orchestra teachers, about what does it look like and where do we want to see it offered? Before school has its positives and its negatives during the school day, same thing. But in looking at what we wanted to do, we, we looked at bringing band and orchestra into the school day for most of the rehearsals. And so most of the rehearsals will be during the school day, allowing students to not make that choice between sleep or band and orchestra and be able to have it during, during the school day for more opportunity. We currently have, going to that second line, three fine arts classes. All students receive drama and art, music. And so we wanted to expand the opportunities, as Dr. Silverman was saying. And so you can see, and we've changed the name because not all are, can be in that category of fine arts. And so we changed it to encore, five encore classes that'll be offered for students, drama, art, music, STEM, and the 21st Century Media class. And those two, you'll hear about in a little bit from Mr. Richter. Currently, our students, some students are polled for interventions during fine arts, but there's not a lot of choice. You're taking art, drama, and music. And so we talked about giving some choice during the grades for students to have a little bit of option. And so in sixth grade, we did say that we wanted all students to have all of the encore classes. But, but the schedule did allow that they can make a choice at the end of their sixth grade for, for one of the encore classes that they would, I say repeat, but not repeat the same curriculum, of course. But, you know, maybe they choose to, to re, to take drama again, and it'll be an extension of something that they would learn in drama, but something to that next level. And so that will happen in the third trimester. So they still have an opportunity to take all five encore classes and there's just a sixth spot where they can then fit in a class of their choice. Of course, we understand that, you know, students will choose and there's, and there's, you know, limits to how many kids can be in the classes. And we've, we've talked about that, but it does give them a little bit of choice. And in a second, Karen's going to talk to you about the choices that seventh and eighth graders will have eventually. Currently, I'm on the fourth line now. Our, our students currently have X block for all grades in our new schedule and obviously making room for some of the things we're talking, going to talk about and have talked about. There is no X block in the schedule. A big thing about X block right now is that we, we offer interventions during that time for students who need that extra support. And so most likely, although we're always flexible, but most likely that the students would receive interventions during the encore classes. With the understanding, though, that now that we're offering more, they'll still have some choice. If it's a student that, that needs an intervention, but maybe really wants to be in drama and art and STEM, we'll make sure that that happens as best, you know, as, as we can. So, so there is no X block moving forward. Currently, our sixth graders receive global language starting right away and they get it every other day for sixth grade. So at the end of a year, at the end of sixth grade, it's a, it's a half a year. They, they get it for half a year. Moving forward, they'll still get global language for the same amount of time in sixth grade, but we've changed it to really front load some support for sixth grade and then have a gradual release of global language throughout. So in the first trimester, when they're just starting in, in, in middle school and really need help with that transition, they won't have global language in that first trimester. And then starting in the second trimester, they'll have it every other day. And then in the third trimester, they'll have it every day as they get ready for seventh and eighth grade where they continue to have it every day. So a little bit of a gradual release of global language to help support them a little bit. One less academic class that they need to take right when they start middle school. And then one other big change, but something that was everyone around the table saw as a big need was how to help students transition into sixth grade. And so we will have a middle school success class that all sixth graders will take in that first trimester. So when they're not taking global language, they'll be having this transition class. And that'll be talked about in a couple slides.
Good evening. As the committee really started to speak about needs, they saw it as an opportunity to see if we could address some needs that had formed during the pandemic. Our current sixth grade class and even our seventh graders have not had the instruction they normally would have in executive functioning and other skills. And the committee thought it would be appropriate for students, all students next year, to take a middle school success class as they start the year. And we transitioned back from the year plus of pandemic. So that would be a change that would be in place just next school year before we transition into the plan, which I'm about to speak about. Can you go? The following year, there'll be some additional choice options for both seventh and eighth graders. For seventh graders, it would look very similar to sixth graders. Students would be able to choose an additional encore class that they take their trimester that would be an extension of an already existing class. So they'd take an art class and have an opportunity for additional art, for instance. For eighth graders, the team thought that it would be appropriate for our students to have an opportunity to really dig in and spend some additional time in some of their encore classes. So instead of encores rotating on a trimester, which is what they currently do, students will have an opportunity to choose four classes that they would take for a semester long. So this would be a great opportunity to get to spend a little bit more time in some areas of interest. Next slide.
So it's my turn. Thank you. I want to, I'm going to share a little information about how the fourth and the fifth encore classes emerged. From the very beginning of the committee's process, we knew, going back originally, that we wanted to offer more experiences for students, more opportunities. And we kind of knew from the very beginning that the, that if we were to add any new ones, one of them would certainly be a STEM class. And this was because we were aware of the community's interest in STEM as a, as an area for learning. We were aware that GBS has a STEM program that many of our parents and community members are interested in. And we even started down the road a little bit with a project Lead the Way experience for our students. And so truth be told, we didn't really spend a lot of time on determining whether or not that, what that fourth encore opportunity was going to be for the students. And everybody felt really comfortable with that. The fifth encore class called 21st Century Media, you can see the description, there really focuses on the idea about helping students grow to be effective community, effective consumers of information. And so this class involves experiences both in terms of understanding how media is produced. And so they'll have opportunities to dabble in some production, whether that is broadcast or whether that is print or whether that is web based. But it's not a intended to be creative arts class. These opportunities to engage in production are meant to help students understand some of the structural components about how modern media works. And then along with that, through their understanding of how some of the structures of media works, we're hoping to fold in opportunities for them to be good askers of questions about information that's circulating, that they're receiving as consumers. So that by the end of the class, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they really have an ability to apply some analytical skills to some of the media that they encounter in their daily lives.
All right, I'm going to talk a little bit more about specifics regarding the middle school success class. So the focus of this class will primarily be around building students' executive functioning skills. And as Karen discussed, we had originally planned this class to be primarily for sixth graders to help facilitate a smooth and positive transition to middle school. However, given the pandemic and really wanting to ensure that our students are receiving the supports they need going into next year, our committee felt it was important to also provide that opportunity for seventh and eighth graders to get some exposure to, to that school-wide executive functioning teaching as well, just for the upcoming school year. So in terms of what will be taught in this class, for, for sixth graders specifically, we'll look at planning structured beginning of the year activities, really helping students, supporting them in navigating the middle school environment with multiple classes and teachers. And then for all grade levels, teaching students self advocacy skills, other areas of executive functioning, like organizational skills, using an assignment notebook, planning out assignments and work due each week, study skills. And then most importantly, we want to build in opportunities for students to generalize the skills across classes. So not only will they receive the skill instruction in their middle school success class, but all staff will be well versed in what executive functioning skills are being taught so that they can assist students in using the skills across all classes in their day. So we're excited to continue planning for this class and to, to see how the implementation unfolds next year for the benefit of students. Next slide, please. All right. So, so what does this all mean? So just to sum everything up, I'm going to go through these final points. All sixth graders will receive the middle school success class each year moving forward, starting next year. And then for seventh and eighth graders, they will get a version of the class as well, just for next year. After the second year of implementation, all students across each grade will have the opportunity to have some choice in which encore classes that they take based on their interest. Also, we are adding on two additional encore options. So in addition to art, music, and drama, students will be able to choose from STEM and 21st Century Media class as well. Band and orchestra will be taught during the school day. And then another exciting aspect of the schedule is that it does provide the opportunity for co-teachers. So general education teachers and EL bilingual and special education teachers to have dedicated planning time every single day. So this increased collaboration time is really going to be a great way for teachers to do planning to better ensure that all students get the supports that they need.
Muted. Okay. So that is a lot of information, I think, in a, in a short period of time. But we wanted to share with you the plans moving forward and I think are here to answer any questions you might have.
So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. The middle school schedule is something that I think has been talked about since my first year on the board, which is six years ago. So that just puts into perspective, one, how complex this issue is. There were no easy solutions and so many of you have worked year over year to try to crack this nut. What I heard tonight is really exciting. You know, the idea of a middle school success class is, you know, so necessary next year, the fact that all three grades of middle school will get it, I think, is, you know, is a reassurance to students and parents that any, that after this year, that there will be more attention placed on getting everybody acclimatized, acclimated, acclimated back to school. So I mean, I just think that is terrific. I love the additional choices for middle school students. And I love the additional classes. I mean, I think students crave a little bit more control over their school day as they get older. And this clearly answers that, that need. And, you know, the X block has been around for a long time and, and it's been, there's been a lot of debate about the value of it. So I see that it's, you know, no longer going to be in its traditional form. I hear what you're saying, that the people who needed it for reinforcement and for other things, they're going to get that in a different form. So I'm glad you didn't drop that aspect of what X block was used for. So thank you for that. Now, I've, I've said a lot of things and I'm going to now turn it over to my fellow board members for other questions or comments. Jim?
So I echo Natalie's sentiment about being great work. And I work at a high school and I am one of our primary schedule builders as well. So I understand the effort that goes into having to build such a thing. But I also know that building schedules involves a lot of trade offs. I mean, I love all the things that are in there. I'm just curious, are there any aspects of the process where you felt like you had to give something up other than this X block change perhaps that Natalie mentioned? Are there things that you were like, oh, we had to tweak this or give some things up? Are there any, you know, what, what were the trade offs you had to make to get all these great things that you talked about today?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in first and say, coming right from Natalie's remark, we had to give up X block. And, and so that certainly meant some trade offs in terms of some convenient opportunities to provide students with some interventions, which meant that they wouldn't necessarily miss something. And so we, we did recognize that there were going to be some trade offs in terms of that aspect of the school. That's one that occurs to me right away.
I would say, Jim, I agree, I agree. I've been a part of a lot of different schedule committees. And typically that is the case. And I was actually just thinking about it right before this meeting, that, that this was just one place where it kind of all fell, fell together pretty, pretty nicely. Last year, I would say, if you would ask me the question when we were implementing the schedule for this year, this current year, there were, there were definitely a lot of trade offs and we can, we can talk about that because of just how the schedule worked out. For, for this, for what we're talking about for next year, it ended up, I would tell you, there, there really wasn't a ton. It was a lot of working together. There wasn't a ton out there. I will say that, that the band and orchestra coming into the school day was one place where we had a lot of conversation because students who are going to take band and orchestra will need to miss something. In seventh and eighth grade, that will be some encore classes. And there is that conversation of, again, if you're, if you're taking it, you're always, if there's an option, if there's ever an optional class, you're always going to be missing something. We joke that currently the kids miss sleep because they get up so early. And so in, in this case, they'll, they'll be missing something during the school day. So we did have a lot of conversation about that. We also know the schedule isn't reliant on that. In, in other words, it's not holding a spot for anything, which means if it's something we find that, that is not successful or doesn't work very well, we have some other options. But I would tell you that that was one, but, but really I do think there's, there is a lot of happy, excited people, you know, both when we've shared with parents, when I've talked to students and when, and when the staff has been involved, that they're excited about all these changes.
Great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Scott?
I really am excited about this new program. It's so awesome that the students are going to have choice. And the student success class is going to pay dividends even when they get into high school. I can honestly say my daughter really could have used that in middle school. My question about the additional encore classes, in the future, will you be looking to maybe change the total? You know, you have five encore classes and you added two different new ones. Will that be something you will review over time and see if you need to adjust that?
Well, I would say that structurally, it's possible to add more. And that's a conversation, obviously, with the board and district administration because more opportunities mean more people and more facilities and the like. But it, it's certainly possible to consider expanding choices for students. And, and we hope to have that conversation, both as a part of evaluating the new opportunities that we provided to the students and to continue to engage in sort of that self reflection to say, are we, are we missing any opportunities that we should be providing to students to further help them learn and grow in this modern age? So, yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I see your hand is up.
Thank you. So I'm a big fan of, of what I've seen. The one, the one area, and I'm almost a little reluctant to bring it up, but I think it's, it's come up before with our board and it's come up in other places. So it won't be a surprise to Principal Richter or Principal Venna that I made a, made a regular practice of attending lunch with my daughter. It's something I've been doing since she was in kindergarten, pre-pandemic. I noticed at Etia that there was a lot of stress around eating fast and making sure that people could get their meals done in a reasonable amount of time. I'm not suggesting that the block needs to be changed, but I have observed, sitting in the, in the room, that there seems to be a lot of rushing that happens to get the kids onto the playground. And I just, I suspect that there's nothing we want to adjust within the timeframes because we want to get everything done that we can. I would simply ask to, to somehow find a way to make sure that the children that do want to eat lunch have the opportunity to do so. I hear frequently, and even from other board members, that their kids have given up on eating lunch in a traditional sense. They just, they just don't do it because they don't have enough time to do it. So I just leave that with you all to navigate the best way that you can. So I just leave that with you all to navigate the best way that you can.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any, Katie, yes.
Just really quickly, like Jim, I've been involved in many schedule building and I know it can be a ginormous puzzle headache. And just from what I've heard you say, and looking at this, and looking at what I saw coming into the district, and I didn't understand it then, this, this makes a lot more sense. But I just want to applaud the fact that you guys had what seems like a very creative approach to this, where you didn't have to give up, sounds like really anything or much at all, to be able to acquire so much more. So I just want to applaud your efforts on that. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board? Seeing none. No, Diane. Oh, Diane, I'm so sorry.
I didn't want it, it's hard on Zoom to know whether you're jumping on top of someone else who's already speaking. And I hate when I do that. So I wanted to be, honestly, really mostly what I want to do is just say thank you. A- as a parent of orchestra, someone who's been in orchestra before, what you've pulled together and what you've done makes so much sense. You know, I know that the middle school schedule has been something that I echoing Natalie's comments has been something that we've been trying to to improve upon for a while or that you've been trying to improve upon for a while. And I just want to thank all of your efforts. I do think it was a very creative approach, as Katie mentioned. I also do want to to echo some of what Jim says. I am a little bit concerned that I have heard a lot of students don't really eat come middle school. And i- if there's some way to 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 work on that particular issue, that would be great. But above and beyond that, I think that you've done a wonderful job and I just want to express my thanks.
Thank you, team. It's been part of a journey, that's for sure. And everyone who's been involved in this has done a great job. So thank you. Thank you all. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks. A lot of thanks happening, but I think they're well deserved. So. So we are going to move on at this point. And we go to Dr. Silverman once more to talk about summer learning.
I get to brag about my amazing colleagues, the tremendous amount of work Mary, Kristen, Raquel put into this exceptional summer school. It's so awesome. And you are going to be equally and more blown away by this presentation because it is going to be a summer of awesomeness. So with that, I'm going to let them take it away and share the amazing planning that they've done.
And I will take it away. I will share my screen and minimize all of you. Sorry. I'll put it in present mode. So thank you, Dr. Silverman. Yes, we are excited about our summer 2021 learning opportunities. As you will hear tonight, we are offering a tiered approach to summer learning again, for the purposes of providing learning experiences to any returning student. Each tier is designed specifically for the students that will receive instruction at that tier. As you will hear more about, our summer learning is designed primarily to mitigate learning loss and to support maintaining skills. Families that should sign up are those that might be concerned about the impact of this last school year and want to ensure that their children are keeping up their skills. So our main focus throughout all three of the tiers is literacy and numeracy with SEL supports and activities embedded throughout all of our tiers. While we would really like to be able to offer an in-person experience to all of our students, we simply do not have enough staff available to support that effort. So we created an opportunity at tier one for what we really believe is the next best thing. And later on in our presentation, Raquel Kim will be going into greater detail about what our tier one will look like. As you can see from this slide, tier one will be offered for 15 days. It begins on June 21st through July 15th. Monday through Thursday, it'll be both online, synchronous activities as well as asynchronous instruction. There will be also opportunity to meet live via online with one of our teachers from District 34 so that students do have support. Tier two is more supportive. These students will be coming in person for learning for those same four weeks. And again, that focuses on reading, writing, math, and social emotional learning. Those students are invited into that tier two. Tier three is also an invited program. They have to meet a certain specific criteria to participate. And those are students with individual education plans. And I'm having trouble moving it. It's frozen. Went all the way to the end. Oh, hold on. I think it's this slide.
We're on four.
You went it on three? Yep, four. Perfect. Okay, Raquel.
Thank you, Mary. So our literacy curricular focus is a review and reinforcement of grade level learning standards. At tier one, our tier one students will participate in both asynchronous activities that will guide the synchronous learning time with their teachers. At tier two, students will receive direct instruction in person to address key grade level standards using the current workshop model and best practices strategies. At tier three, students will work on literacy by receiving direct instruction using an instructional planning process. And our mathematics curricular focus is a review and reinforcement of numeracy skills. The same level of supports will be provided at tier one, two, and three, as mentioned, for literacy instruction. So we just want to take this time to give a special thanks to our board for allowing us the opportunity to offer a summer experience to all of our students once again, at no additional cost to our families. Last year, for the first time, we invited all returning students to participate in an online learning platform. While we would love to to provide this experience in person, due to limited staff availability, tier one summer school will take place online. And we will be utilizing an online learning platform called Imagine Learning. It will provide, it will allow students to demonstrate their understanding of grade level content. The online platform will assess students before and after each unit to monitor progress and check for understanding. Students will get instant feedback as they complete each activity. And when they do not demonstrate mastery of a skill, they will need to review and demonstrate understanding before moving on. The platform provides additional language support in Spanish and Korean. And students in grades three and third grade and above will have access to a live online teacher for math support if they need, if they need it. And there are Spanish bilingual teachers available for students who need that support. And for two hours a week, they will meet online with one of our teachers to address specific literacy and numeracy skills. Teachers will adjust the student's individual learning pathway as needed.
Doesn't want to work. I don't know why it does. It freezes and it goes back to the end. Sorry. There we go.
So we are, we know that students benefit from accessing other resources in our community. And we are partnering with the Glenview Public Library and Youth Services of Glenview Northbrook to offer additional experiences to all of our students. Like us, to meet the growing interest in program participation with a limited pool of human resources, our partners are offering a combination of in-person and virtual experiences. In partnership with the Glenview Public Library, we will be offering a read and meet the author program. District 34 students can pick up a free copy of the author's book from the library. This gives students, the, and families, a chance to learn about other library events and resources. And they can sign up for a library card if they don't already have one. The library will provide a discussion guide, a book list of other titles to read, and activities they can do at home that tie to the book. During the last week in July and the beginning of August, students can meet their author via a live online session to learn about the research involved in the creation of the books. Our D34 students will also get to ask their author questions about the book they are reading. And our other partner, Youth Services of Glenview Northbrook, will provide an activities-based program in person to support students' social and emotional wellbeing. Due to staffing limitations, this program will be limited to a targeted group of D34 students.
It's going to go to the end again. I don't know what the heck. There we go.
Thank you. So for tier two instruction, we, we will be providing this in person, as Mary had mentioned. The purpose of this in-person experience is to review key grade level learning standards that focus on specific academic language and concepts. Teachers will provide literacy and numeracy instruction using curricular resources and strategies used throughout the school year. All students will also have access to the online learning platform, Imagine Learning. And as determined by individual learning needs, students may also receive additional support from an associate and English language teacher, reading interventionist, technology specialist, or student services personnel.
Okay, so as we move along the continuum of our summer learning opportunities, we hit tier three, tier three A and B instruction. And this really will focus on our kids that have individualized education plans. And they will be invited due to a specific criteria, as Mary mentioned in the beginning. At this level of instruction, we have already begun actually engaging in some very specific instructional planning for our kids based on individual need. At this tier, the kids will attend longer. They'll attend six weeks, about 23 days versus 15. And the support will be onsite in its very tailored curriculum and support that matches a student's needs. As Raquel mentioned in tier two, tier three will also have access to embedded supports throughout the day, such as counseling, assistive technology, student service coaching, speech therapy, occupational therapy, and support of associates. They will also, in addition to their tailored curriculum, have access to Imagine Learning with guided support from teachers in order for them to access that. And we're really, we're really excited to be able to provide this level of support during our summer learning opportunities.
So as we begin planning for our next school year, 2021, 22, our intent is not to wait until next summer. While we have and continue to improve upon our multi-tiered systems of support at every building, we know the school day sometimes is just not enough for some students. While there is, this is still in the planning stages, we plan to offer an after-school learning labs. And those learning labs will provide targeted supports in the areas of literacy, numeracy, and social emotional skill building. Their main focus will be to address learning loss and reinforce critical skills. We will evaluate the effectiveness of these learning labs in 21, 22, and make decisions for next summer. Probably a little bit less than a year in late January or February of 2022. While we know we must offer an extended school year for students with disabilities that show regression and lack of recu- recruitment, we are exploring different ideas that allow us to partner with our community partners and offer experiences to children who wouldn't otherwise be exposed to such experiences. So more to come on that in the next year. Okay, you know, the last slide is the question mark. I'm going to stop sharing. There you go.
Bang on the keys harder.
Is that it?
Yeah, just bang harder.
So I take it we've come, we've come to the point where it's time for questions. So I get that big question mark means questions.
Questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate what you guys have in the works. I realize this summer, we have some limitations with what we can do. What I find, what I really liked about the different tiers is an attempt to target the group of students who need the most support. So I I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the acknowledgement that there has to be planning made to address learning loss. I'm sure we're all thinking about that as we kind of approach the end of this year and put a period at the end of it. We're all kind of thinking about, how do we that now approach next year? And so I appreciate the fact that that is on the radar, that that's, the plans are already in the works for that. I'm going to open it up to my fellow board members. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Jim.
Uh, yeah, Grace, I like the the tiered approach that Natalie pointed out. It's a great, seems like a great way to address some of the learning issues. I did, on the tier two, I said a couple of more detailed questions, like, how many students can our tier two accommodate roughly? Like when, when, I know tier one, everyone can do. Tier two, I know there's capacity constraint. Like, what is the capacity?
We, we can accept up to 300 students for tier two.
I'm surprised by that. That's a lot bigger than I was thinking.
Right. It's kindergarten through seventh grade. And there is one block, one section of EC for, for ESY.
And you mentioned it was going to be invite-only. Is it invite and mandatory? Or is it invite and then optional? And then you would go down the list and keep inviting people till you fill the 300.
Correct. We do have a waiting list, recommended list, list from our staff. So if people do, you know, decline the offer, the invite, then we move down the waitlist. And it is not, so tier two is not mandatory. Tier three, we are obligated to provide it, but parents do not have to accept it.
Nothing in summer is mandatory.
And then this is the final question, like on tier one, is there any particular incentive other than the love of learning for someone to want to do it? Which I mean, love of learning is a great incentive in and of itself, but I'm just wondering if
Your parents are
There are many carrots out there for people to do it.
There are a lot of students who feel that way. Yeah.
There actually are incentives that the company will be offering. So Imagine Learning has the, you can earn points through however many activities you engage with online. And they will raffle off prizes.
All right, so there's some merch involved potentially. All right.
I kind of love how that builds on last year's summer program, right? It it seems like a nice, like a, there's continuity from last summer to this summer in that tier one. So, thank you. Anybody else have Thanks, Jim. Any other questions, comments? All right, I don't see any. So once again, thanks for your presentation and we will move on. Our next order of business is the following meeting agenda. And I just wanted to point out that our next meeting is our board organization meeting on Tuesday, April 27. At that time, election results will be confirmed and a new board will be sworn in. This meeting will be held in person. At this time, the location is still to be determined. And as soon as plans are finalized, we will communicate that out to everyone. I just wanted to give a preview. And again, that's going to be Tuesday instead of Monday, Tuesday, April 27. All right, thank you. Now we are at the second and final opportunity for audience comments. And before I give a little recap, I'm just going to ask Kathy, are there any people waiting to comment?
Yes, we have somebody signed up to comment, but I do not see them in the attendee list. So I'm not able to bring them over. Let me just take nobody with a name even close. So.
So then I will spare everyone the recap. And thanks to the two people who did comment tonight. So that brings us to our reports. We have five reports tonight. The FOIA report, NSCD board meeting report, budget status report, current year financial projections, and referendum expense report. Does anybody on the board have any questions about any of those reports? All right, seeing none, we will move on to other business. And right at this moment, I'm going to say that I have something that I wanted to say tonight. Although I'm going to be on the board for two more years, this is my last meeting as board president. And I saved this for the end so I wouldn't bore everybody to pieces because I know fewer people. Stay tuned to the end, but I did want to take this opportunity to stay tuned to the end. But I did want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to everybody that's listening, to our students and their families, to our teachers, to our administration and to my fellow board members. I thank you for your engagement and your dedication to our district. A lot has happened over the last two years and we have all gone through something together. Even though it didn't always feel like we were together, we really were because we all share a passion and dedication to the education and wellbeing of the students of our district. I want to specifically thank our cabinet team and Dr. Deli. More was asked of all of you in these last two years than could have possibly been anticipated. You rose to the challenge. I thank you for your collaboration and hard work. I also want to express my gratitude to my fellow board members, Jim, John, Katie, Mike, Scott, and Diane. Thank you for your collegiality, your willingness to share your valuable perspectives and for your friendship. And finally, on a personal note, I just want to thank my family. Don't think they're even listening, but in case you are, I wanted to thank Marco, Matthew, and Thomas. The last two years haven't always been easy for them either. And I really thank them for their patience and support. And that's all I wanted to say. I felt the need to say that after two years. So thank you, all of you. And I'll just ask the rest of the board, does anybody have any other board business to bring forward tonight?
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie.
Well, well said, Natalie. Thank you. Your presidency has been amazing.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that. All right. Seeing no other board business, I will ask for a second and a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So move, Mike Corman. I would be great if Katie could, uh, second that.
I second that.
Thank you for that. Um, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries and we are officially adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's quite a smile, Natalie.
Don't know why. No. Thank you, all of you. Really appreciate it. Good night.